And then it doesn't.
What is with you?
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be better.
There'll never be a vote like this.
That's a great question.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm.
System, system check.
They don't let us abstain.
I'm strongly opposed to whatever it is.
Why am I not checked in here? Come on.
Except on the street corner. We're here the adjacent part. Yeah, that probably wouldn't.
I think we're gonna fight now.
Well, that's a safe area.
There we go. Okay.
Oh, so I wanted to know, the Obamas called again.
No way.
I'm not kidding. They called yet.
Come on.
Tell her that we can all. I'm gonna tell Barack to get you off the speed dial, man.
Seriously, get Barack off the speed dial.
Tom, you're gonna do your report during the, uh, your priority items.
Where are you at? Remember that? Remember that was an ad for some, uh, was Click to Talk? Ones that was not.
For the Constitution Day.
What's that? Do you remember what, where are you at? That was the tag. Where are you at?
Why don't you let, let me know what that is, actually.
It was like a beeper. This was, this was a different version of that. It was the where you, I don't know, had some zippy name to, yeah, obviously so zippy, I forgot.
Okay. Oh boy, all these good people. I don't hate these people.
I got that. Thank you. Renetta?
España?
Will you come and read the?
It's in España. Southern. And he gave it to you, Podruski. Nieta Profan, it's Russian. My friend's Russian. That's not working. My iPad is not working.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Durham City Council to order at 7:00 PM on September the 17th, 2018. Excuse me. And I'd like to ask you to please first join me in a moment of silent meditation. Thank you. And now I'll ask Councilmember Reese to please join us, lead us to Pledge the Flag.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. If it's your practice to do so, and if you're able, please rise, join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. And now, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Shul?
Here.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Alston?
Here.
Councilmember Caballero?
Here.
Councilmember Freeman?
Present.
Councilmember Middleton?
Here.
And Councilmember Reese?
Here.
Thank you. We're now going to move to our ceremonial items, and we have two ceremonial items tonight, even though one of them is only one of them listed, and we're gonna begin with the Neighbor Spotlight recipient. I'm going to ask if Rita Van Ex will please come forward. Did I get your name right? Great. And do you have family and friends who are with you? Why don't you ask them to come on up? Please join us. Come all the way up. Great. And you all coming on up here with us and... We'll get, we'll get the pictures. Yeah, we'll definitely have time for photographs. Laura made sure of that before the meeting. Rita Van Ex is the recipient of the Neighbor Spotlight for the month of September 2018. The Neighbor Spotlight Award recognizes community members that have gone above and beyond in volunteering their time to serve the community. This month, Rita Van Ex, a resident of the Five Oaks Neighborhood, was nominated and selected because of the wonderful work she has done in her neighborhood, including, but not limited to, initiating and maintaining the Five Oaks Neighborhood Watch to foster a safe community, hosting popular national night out events and neighborhood parties to help neighbors get to know each other, organizing community trainings on 911 CPR and active shooter situations to help residents stay informed. Congratulations, Ms. Van Ex, on being the September Neighbor Spotlight for the City of Durham, and I want to thank you for all the work you do to improve the Durham community, and just want to tell you how much we on the City Council and the City of Durham appreciate you. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I guess I should, I guess I should say first, and I'm gonna present you with this fabulous certificate, and ask you to say a few words.
Thank you. So, it's just a pleasure, really, to be in Durham that has awards like this for neighborhood recipients. Not every community in large town does this, and so I just, you know, wanna commend Durham for, for making citizens feel special and the opportunity to serve and participate with neighborhood safety programs. It's been great to really coordinate with the Durham Police Department and the PAC III group especially. So, and, and my fabulous neighbors. Thanks.
Laura has asked us to come down and take a picture, so, okay, go ahead, take that one first. Got it?
Personal photography.
Okay, come on, neighbors, we're all gonna go down, and Laura, you're gonna take our pictures, is that right? Our second presentation, is Ms. Emily Walker here? Ms. Walker? Okay. Well, we've had a little bit of a, a situation today. I don't know if you noticed, but we've had a hurricane. This was supposed to have been presented today at the, this, this regarding Constitution Week and Constitution Day, was supposed to have been presented today at the Durham History Museum at 3:30, but that was canceled, and so I decided I would go ahead and do it tonight. I'm sorry Ms. Walker couldn't be here. I was hoping she would be, but I know that the weather is what it is. But I'm gonna ask my council colleague, Renetta Austin, to please come and read this proclamation for Constitution Week, Constitution Day, and Citizenship Day.
All right.
And we'll, we'll send this by mail to Ms. Walker.
Whereas, our founding fathers, in order to secure the blessings of liberty for themselves and their posterity, did ordain and establish a constitution for the United States of America. And whereas, at the culmination of months of deliberation, debate, and compromise, on September 17th, 1787, the Constitution of the United States of America was signed in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. And whereas, September 17th, 2018, marks the 231st, 231st anniversary of the signing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas, through all its changes over the years, the Constitution's foundation has endured and adapted and remains the supreme law of our land. And whereas, Constitution Day and Citizenship Day are celebrated on September 17th each year during the celebration of Constitution Week, September 17th through September 23rd. And whereas, the adoption of the Constitution and the independence guaranteed to American citizens, whether by birth or by naturalization, should be celebrated by appropriate ceremonies and activities during Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I, Stephen M. Shul, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim September 17th through September 23rd, 2018, as Constitution Week, and September 17th, 2018, as Constitution Day and Citizenship Day in Durham North, in Durham, and encourage all, excuse me, and encourage and call upon the residents of Durham to observe this day to bring together governmental, civic, civic, social, and educational leaders to conduct ceremonies and programs that bring together community members to reflect on the importance of active citizenship, recognize the enduring strength of our Constitution, and reaffirm our commitment to the rights and obligations of citizenship in this great nation. Witness my hand and the corporate seal of the City of Durham, North Carolina, the 17th day of September, 2018.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much, Councilmember Austin, and we will mail that to Ms. Ms. Walker. And now, I'm gonna ask for announcements by the council, and I'm gonna start with an announcement before turning it over to others. We are welcoming tonight a very special group of young people from Spain, from Madrid, Spain, who are here with us, and they're, also they're chaperones as well. And their hosts, families, from Durham Academy, students and, and parents from adult, from Durham Academy who have welcomed these students. This is a group of exchange students that are part of an exchange program that's been going on for several years between Madre de Dia, de Dias in Madrid and Durham Academy. The exchange happens every two years with a focus on language acquisition and cultural immersion. The students who are visiting us, there are 10 of them, they're 14 and 15 years old, and I'm gonna read their names, and I'm gonna ask you to stand as I read your name. I know some of you all may not, might all of them may not be here, but you'll just stand as I read your name, and if you'll just forgive my pronunciation. Before I read your names, though, I'm going to ask Councilmember Caballero to give perhaps a better welcome than I was able to.
Hola, mucho gusto. Gracias por estar con nosotros. Bienvenidos a nuestra ciudad. Y que les vaya bien, y que lleguen seguros a su casa de vuelta.
Gracias. I'm now gonna call your names and ask you to stand. Enrique Arconada? Paola Garcia? Jose Ruano? Pablo Garcia? Marco Grabelsec? Beatrice Salmon? Alberto De Benito? Javier Diaz? Julian Sopena? And Jorge Martin? We're really glad to have you here. Thanks for being here. And also want to welcome Isabel Rios Torres and Allison Maddox from Durham Academy, who are here having coordinated this. Thank you. Thank you all very much. You can be seated. And let me just say that we welcome you to stay for the entire meeting. If you don't want to, you won't hurt our feelings. Okay. Any announcements by members of the council? Any other announcements? Councilmember Caballero?
I have several. So, Hispanic Heritage Month kicked off on September 15th, and it'll go through October 15th. So, here's a fun fact. One of the reasons that it starts on September 15th, it's because it was Honduras's, Costa Rica's, El Salvador, and Guatemala's Independence Day on September 15th, and then it was Mexico's Independence Day yesterday, and then it's Chilean Independence Day tomorrow. So, Feliz Batas Festas.
Great. Thank you. Do you have other announcements as well? Oh, okay.
I can give you all a little history lesson if you want, but I'd have to reach, I'd have to reach, like, you know, back 20 years.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. That was a good fun fact.
Mayor Shul, as a follow-up, I just wanna share that we, that I have proposed a proclamation for Hispanic, Hispanic Heritage Month.
Right.
And we'll bring it up at the next.
Super. Wonderful. Thank you. Other announcements? Councilmember Austin?
I just wanna take a minute to thank all the members of our staff for the tremendous amount of work that they've put in, in the last week or so, in response to Hurricane Florence, and just in my gratitude, 'cause I know it's been a lot of long hours, and, you know, we needed to respond across a lot of different areas, so just wanna, thank you.
Much appreciated. Other announcements?
Just another, just sharing, I had a very informative time at the Congressional Black Caucus this last week, their 48th Annual Legislative Convention, and I really appreciated the opportunity to be there and to meet with our congressional members of the Black Caucus, and hearing from a lot of the community on the issues that matter to us in this city. So, I look forward to bringing more of those conversations here. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. The comment about the hurricane reminded me to just bring up that, you know, Durham really, we, we got lucky. We kinda got sideswiped by the storm, but our friends and neighbors down east were not so lucky. There are a lot of hurricane relief efforts that are happening right now for folks in eastern North Carolina and South Carolina who are really hard hit by the storm, so I wanna encourage everyone who may have over-prepared and have some extra flashlights or bottles of water lying around your house to send those to folks who are more in need down east.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem.
I certainly over-prepared.
I think we all, all of us did. All right. Any other announcements? If not, I'm gonna turn to the priority items, and I know that our city manager has a priority, priority item for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I don't have any official priority items this evening related to the agenda, but I do wanna take just a moment of personal privilege, if I can, to talk a bit about the storm. Certainly, we tried to keep the council, mayor and council, informed along the ways. I'm not gonna go through all those details, but I do wanna just mention, without getting into the specifics, 'cause I know I'll forget somebody and get in trouble, just how proud I am and appreciative I am of all the departments and the city employees who worked so hard over the last several days related to the storm, both in preparation for the storm early, or, or early and late last week, trying to, to anticipate all of the worst-case scenarios that fortunately we didn't experience, but we know others did, and prepare in so many ways our facilities and all of the things that, that we needed to have lined up, so that if and when those worst-case scenarios came about, we didn't have to stop and think about them, they were ready, ready to move forward. And then certainly during the, the storm, beginning Thursday through, through Sunday, how the departments and the staff certainly monitored what was going on 24 hours a day. We had staff at the Emergency Operations Center, Manning the Joint Information Center, trying to anticipate every turn, every movement, every possible wind scenario, rain scenario, certainly trying to do our best to inform the community of what we knew and what they might anticipate and what they should do under certain situations. And then in a few situations, also responding, fortunately, it was mostly just a few downed trees and things like that. And then what we thought was going to be after the storm, but turned out to be our worst day, was this morning, and certainly the, the staff, because of their preparation, they were able to, to respond, and certain situations, provide a few rescues of people who were stranded in some, some, some rising water, responding to a number of infrastructure issues that, several of which are going to be with us for a while, two or three fairly major road closures that are, that are going to have to be responded to, some other infrastructure issues, but certainly all things that we're very capable and prepared for. And then finally, as, as Council, or the Mayor Protem mentioned, you know, we know that there are a number, numbers, countless numbers of communities and folks who have significant needs, and I anticipate over the next days and possibly weeks and months, Durham will be called upon to, to try and support their recovery, and we certainly are prepared to do that. I would just suggest that, you know, if, if you do receive calls and, from either your constituents and other communities or, or organizations with good intentions, that we'd be sure and, and route all of those through the normal, the required protocols, that we make sure that, you know, as requests come in, they can be vetted, and they can be, they can be triaged through the, the state EOC system, so, but thank you very much. Again, I'm very appreciative of the departments, all of the employees, and very proud to, to be a part of, of that response this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager, and I appreciated the comments of Councilmember Austin and of the Mayor Protem, and wanna second that. I think we're all very proud of how our employees did. Councilmember Reese and I, and I believe a couple of colleagues as well, had the opportunity to visit the, the shelter at Hillside early on, and when people were just, thank you all for being here. We got, we had the opportunity to, to visit the shelter and see how well organized that was. I also paid a brief visit to the Emergency Operations Center, which was up early and ready, and, thank you. And so, I think we can all be very proud of, of the preparation that we had, and very grateful that we, that it wasn't necessary for us to make use of that, that preparation in, in the way that we had feared.
Thank you.
So, thank you. All righty. And, Mr. Attorney, do any priority items?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, no priority items.
All righty. Madam Clerk?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have no items.
Thank you very much. All right. We are now going to turn to our consent agenda. The consent agenda can be approved by a single vote of the council. Items, items that are, can be removed by a council member or a member of the public, and then will be voted on separately at the end of the meeting. I'm gonna read the consent agenda. Item one, approval of city council minutes. Item three, Durham Housing Authority Board of Commissioners appointment. Item four, Human Relations Commission appointments. Item five, Recreation Advisory Commission appointment. Item six, mayor's nominee for reappointment Recreation Advisory Commission. Item seven, contract with Durham Community Land Trustees for the rehabilitation of 1700 Merrimack Street. Item eight, contract with Habitat for Humanity of Durham for the minor repair program. Item nine, this item can be found on the general business agenda. Item 10, memorandum of agreement establishing the Triangle Water Supply Partnership. Item 12, utility extension agreement with Carol Ann Assisted Living of North Durham LLC. Item 14, Sibiu Romania, Sister City Proposal. Item 17 to 21, these items can be found on the general business agenda, public hearings. Do I hear a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, will you please open the vote? Close the vote.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to our general business agenda, where we'll be beginning with item nine, the ordinance to establish a permitting procedure to regulate the operation of shared active transportation companies within Durham. Do we have a staff report, or shall we simply start with the council? I'll recognize Councilmember Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Did we have anybody sign up for this item tonight?
I'll be doggone. I'm very glad you asked.
I'm very glad I did, too.
Regulate the, yes, we do. We have two speakers. I'm sorry. James Nishimuta and Mr. Servano Esparsa, and I apologize for not recognizing that. Go ahead, Councilmember Reese. Why don't you speak, and then we'll get them up here.
Mr. Mayor, I thought we'd, might wanna hear from them first.
You wanna hear from them first?
That'd be great.
I'm good with that.
Thank you.
Mr. Nishimuta, and then Mr. Esparsa, please come to the microphone at my right, and you each have three minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. My name is James Nishimuta. I live at 16 Sweet Bay Court. I'm on the board of Bike Durham, as some of you may know. We are an advocacy organization supporting bike lanes and a protected network in the city of Durham, and I just want to speak a little bit in support of this ordinance. And then, really coming from my personal history with, or personal experience with scooters. So, recently, I lived in California a couple years ago, moved three years ago, and then recently had a work trip back, and the amount of bike lanes they put into San Jose has been enormous, and they've, I mean, it's pretty much every street has a bike facility on it. And they had the Limebike Scooters. That was the first time I was able to use one, and it was fantastic. I went there for a work trip. I was a mile away from my hotel, was able to spend the entire time without ever using a car. I took those trips on a scooter every day, and it was, it was a blast. I mean, you see these people riding and their smiles, and those are miles that people would have otherwise been using in a car. So, I'm pretty sure, correct me if I'm wrong, that Durham has signed on the Paris Climate Accord. If we wanna be serious about climate change, and recent hurricane is a reminder of, you know, the costs of letting this be unshut, the number one greenhouse emission is by transportation. So, we need to do everything in our power to reduce vehicle miles traveled. We can do that by providing alternative transportations. Now, I know there is some history with scooters and the NCGA classification as mopeds, that I think Charlie will speak to a little bit later, but I think the city does have power here through two mechanisms. One is selective enforcement of those, what I would call non-applicable laws. These are outdated laws that treat these electric scooters as a moped. This is not realistic. Riding one, you go slower than a bike, but we're mandating that they are treated as a vehicle. That doesn't make any sense logistically. Second is, we can protect the individuals on these bikes by creating a protected network, and this means protected bike lanes with actual physical barriers separate them from vehicles, from cyclists or scooters, as well as low, low-speed neighborhood streets that go through the network. We can drastically change the, the way the city is shaped, and we need to be serious about it.
Mr. Nishimuta, thank you so much for your comments. And now we'll hear from Mr. Servano Esparsa. You also have three minutes.
Thank you. Mayor, city council members, my name is Servando Esparsa, and I'm Senior Manager of Government Relations for Bird, which is a scooter company, an e-scooter, e-scooter company. A little bit about Bird is, we provide a fleet of low-speed electric scooters that give people an affordable, reliable, and fun way to get around town, and so we're really excited in support of this ordinance. I did wanna mention a couple of notes that we hope to work with you as the program progresses. One of the notes is, the fee for e-scooters is $100 per scooter, and it's, it's one of the higher ones in, of, of all the cities that we're, we operate in, but we understand that it is set so that the city can recoup any cost in terms of, of operating the program. And so what we ask is that if, if the costs are not to ma, to maintain this program, are not that, at that level, that council can revisit this and potentially lower the fee if, if that's something that is happening. One note on e-scooters is that they're actually collected every night to go, to be charged, and so they don't sit out on the sidewalks like other potential vehicles, and so you, we avoid some of the issues in terms of, of leaving them out there, and then you have to, of course, redeploy them in the morning. And so, one of the things that we see in several cities is the parity in terms of fees with e-bikes, so that's something that the council can also consider as, as the program continues. I wanted to also mention, because this is highlighted in the ordinance, and we think it's important, is that Bird has a One Bird program, which eliminates the dollar-based fee per ride for anyone who's currently enrolled in or eligible for state or federal assistance program. So, that, that is incredibly helpful, and we think is incredibly important. One of the, the concerns that I wanted to bring up, and it's, it's more that we're, what we're doing is implementing carrots and sticks, so that our users show better behavior, and then we deter someone from, from bad behavior. And one of those issues is that we can send, you know, we have to scan an ID to verify age, because of course these vehicles require someone to be at least 18, and in Bird, we require you to, to scan your ID, to make, make sure that that's something that's happening. And then, we actually ask our users to take a picture afterwards to show us that you actually parked legally, and that's an enforcement capability. And, and what I mentioned about this is that there's a component in here about smart, a non-smartphone option, and those type of enforcement, you know, checks are not gonna be possible with that specific type of program. So, it's just something to flag that as the program continues, that's something that we work on. And then, just wanted, as I mentioned, there's actually a provision in one of the sections that a permit might be revoked, depending on the permissions customers operating the shared devices. Essentially, and I know it's 7 seconds, we just keep, we would love to keep talking to you guys about the flexibility in place, so that we make sure we have the tools available to, to punish our users if they're not using it correctly, and then reward the ones that are using it in a safe manner.
Thank you very much, Mr. Esparsa.
Thank you.
We may have some questions for you, so thank you for being here. I'm gonna now turn it over to Councilmember Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that. I wanna appreciate the folks who came and talked about the current draft ordinance. I, I agree with- Um, I, uh, I agree with a lot of what both of you said tonight. One thing that I've noted, as I've gone through this process, is that we, um, we haven't heard from our, the Durham's, Durham's Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee about this ordinance, and I think, uh, those are the folks in our community who we have, the city has asked to provide us with guidance on issues like this. I think whatever form the ultimate Shared Active Transportation Ordinance takes, it will impact pedestrians and cyclists to a considerable degree, and I'd like to get their input. I reached out to staff last week, and I shared that with, um, my colleagues in the council as well, and, um, would ask that we defer this matter so that we can hear from them, um, the, hear from BPAC about this. The other issue I just wanted to raise just briefly, um, was about enforcement, as one of our speakers mentioned. Uh, I think it would be interesting to hear, uh, from the Durham Police Department about what they anticipate their enforcement posture will be for these devices, if they're actually operated in the, in the street, um, and if there's any way we could get some, uh, some input from our law enforcement agency, that would be great too.
Thank you, councilmember. Um, you've heard the suggestion that we refer this back, uh, to the administration, so that the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee can, uh, offer its review, um, and so am interested in hearing thoughts from my colleagues. Councilmember Austin.
Uh, thank you. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Reese, for your work and, um, your research on this issue. Um, I support referring this ordinance back to, uh, BPAC, to, uh, for their feedback. I think that that's really important. Um, I have a few questions, and, uh, I forget your name, sir, but I just have a few questions, I think.
Mr. Esparsa.
Esparsa, thank you. Um, you mentioned, uh, having users scan their IDs. Um, and forgive me if this is territory we've, that the council's covered already, but, um, do you mean driver's license specifically, or any kind of ID that has an age, age on it?
Any kind of official, uh, there's-
Governmental ID.
Governmental ID, yeah. This is just to verify the, um, actual age.
Gotcha. Um, and just on the helmet issue, I saw that you would allow people to order a helmet. Can you just explain that?
Yeah, absolutely. So, what we do is, um, we have a commitment to safety, where we'll actually host, uh, pop-up events where we just give helmets away, or if any of our users in the markets that we operate wants a helmet, all we do is ask them to, uh, pay a dollar ninety-nine cents, and we'll ship them a helmet.
Okay, so if they wanted, if someone walked up to one and ordered a helmet, it would have to wait for the helmet to be shipped?
To be mailed.
I see.
Yeah, because you, uh, when you do it in the app, you, you give us your size.
I see. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Uh, any other councilmembers, any comments?
I would just like to say, uh, Mayor Schul, I also concur.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Councilmember Freeman. So we have, uh, I, I'm gonna, uh, I think we'll vote on it, and make it official. I'll take a motion that we refer this back to, uh, the administration.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, we refer this back to the administration for further review, and that would include, uh, the, uh, review by the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Any more discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, will you please open the vote? Close the vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you very much. Uh, and, uh, Mr. Esparsa, uh, and, um, Mr. Nishimuta, just, uh, you will want to be in contact with the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee and get your input, uh, as they deliberate as well. Uh, I know you don't live here, and so you're, you're probably, just should be aware of their meeting time and so forth, but our staff can help you become aware of that, okay? Thank you very much. And, uh, Councilmember Reese, thank you for all your work on this, yeah.
Wanted, just wanted to encourage my colleagues to, at some point in the next couple of weeks, just take a trip over to Raleigh and give one of these a try. Please bring a helmet with you, um, and I encourage you to stay off the sidewalk, but it's, uh, it's very instructive on the, both the promise and the peril of these devices.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, quick inquiry?
Sure.
Uh, I, I'm gonna echo, thanks to, to Councilman Reese, the yeoman, yo-person's job he's done on this, uh, on this, uh, undertaking. Just real, real quickly, the staff is gonna ask the police to, to weigh in on this, or give some type of advisory, and two, do we have any idea on the timetable as to when we'll revisit this?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure when the next BPAC meeting is, but, is it, it's tomorrow? Okay, great.
Seven.
You guys got that? Uh, and so, um, uh, it's tomorrow at seven, and so what I would anticipate is that they would be ready to, I'm sure they've been following this issue, and I would anticipate they would be ready to offer some input. Uh, and so, uh, I, I would say that, not at this Thursday's, uh, work session, but perhaps the work session two weeks from Thursday, we would anticipate coming back from us. Does that sound like a reasonable timetable, colleagues?
Absolutely.
Great, okay.
I don't wanna belabor this more than we have to.
Yeah. Um, and in terms of, uh, the police input, I think that, I would, I'm sure, I think it would be good if our staff talked to our police force about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All righty, thank you very much, and, uh, thank you all for being here to discuss that item. Um, we're now gonna move to the general business agenda, public hearings, and our first item is item seventeen, consolidated annex item for Salix Drive.
Good evening, Jamie Sonjak with the Planning Department. Before I get started, I just wanted to mention that all planning, public hearing items have been noticed in accordance with local and state law. Affidavits for the notice are on file in the Planning Department. This is, uh, Salix Drive, good evening. Um, requests for utility extension agreement, voluntary annexation, and zoning map change have been received from Salix Drive LLC for a six-point-five-seven acre tract. The subject site is located generally at four-twenty-five Scott King Road. The annexation petition seeks to bring two parcels into the city limits, um, the existing city limits. The subject site is presently zoned rural residential. The applicant is requesting a zoning designation of residential suburban twenty. The parcels, um, are currently designated as very low residential on the future land use map, which would be consistent with the zoning change. Approval of the annexation petition and zoning would become effective on September thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. There's no development plan associated with this case. The Public Works and Water Management Departments have determined that the existing water and sewer mains have the capacity for the proposed development. The Budget and Management Services Department determined that the proposed annexation will become revenue positive immediately following the annexation, and additional information on those can be found in the staff report. The Durham Planning Commission, at their June twelfth, two thousand and eighteen meeting, recommended approval of the proposed, um, residential suburban twenty zoning district by a vote of eleven to zero. Staff determines that these requests are consistent with the comprehensive plan and applicable policies and ordinances. Three motions are required for this application. The first is required by law to approve the utility extension agreement and the voluntary annexation petition. The second is to adopt a consistency statement, and the third is for the zoning ordinance.
Thank you, Ms. Sonjak. You have heard the report of staff, and I'm now, uh, going to declare this public hearing open, and first I'm gonna ask if there are any questions or comments by members of the council for staff.
Just a quick question, I just wanna verify, the prices, or the included costs that are on page four, that is just seventeen dollars annually, or is that like seventeen dollars altogether forever?
Page, I'm sorry, page four, uh-
Of the staff report.
Of the memo?
Oh, the staff report.
The staff report.
Is that right, Councilmember?
Hold on, let me go back, I'm just looking at, I left it. The memo. Page four, the, the memo.
Page four, the memo.
Where it's talking about Public Works and for planning, is that like?
Per year.
Per year.
Well, the public, the public works, when that's the stormwater-
So where it says additional general fund costs approximately eight-hundred-and-fifty-five associated with street maintenance, that's annually?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? There's no one signed up to speak on this item, but I'm going to ask, this is a public hearing, is there anyone here to speak on this item? Is there anyone here who would like to speak on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Sorry, I apologize.
Could you give us your name and address, please?
Sean Gorman, fifty-eleven South Park Drive here in Durham. I'm the applicant, um, just here for any, any questions.
Right, thank you, Mr. Gorman. Any questions for the applicant, any comments by members of the council? I'll ask again, is there anyone present who would like to speak on this public hearing item? If not, I'm gonna declare this public hearing closed, and the matter is back before the council. I will, uh, entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance annexing Salix Drive and entering into the utility extension agreement.
Who to adopt?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, will you please open the vote? Close the vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Now, we need a motion to adopt the consistency statement.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt the consistency statement. Madam Clerk, will you please open the vote? Close the vote.
The consistency statement passes seven zero.
Thank you. And finally, we need a motion to adopt the ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt an ordinance to amend the UDO. Madam Clerk, will you please open the vote? Close the vote.
UDO passes seven zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you very much. All righty, we'll now move to item eighteen, the consolidated annexation, consolidated annexation item for Southeast Regional Lift Station.
Um, good evening, Council, I'm Grace Smith with the Planning Department. This is a request annex twenty-six acres of property at forty-seven-eighty Kemp Road. The staff recommends an exact translation of zoning of RR, residential rule. While there's not a development plan with this, uh, tract or associated with this request, the end, uh, use for this site is for a sewer lift pump station, which you're probably aware of. If approved, the effective date of the annexation and the initial zoning would be effective on September thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. If you have any questions, staff is available.
Thank you very much. Nice to see you, Ms. Smith, we haven't seen you up here at that microphone in a while.
Good to see you all, yes.
Um, uh, you have heard the report from staff, and I'm now gonna declare this public hearing open, and I'm gonna ask if there are any questions or comments for staff by members of the council. Any questions or comments for, for staff? If not, I have no one signed up to speak on this item, but I'm going to ask, is there anyone here who would like to speak on this public hearing item tonight? Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this item? Any questions or comments from, from council? If not, I'm gonna declare this public hearing closed, and the matter is back before the council. Uh, to, this item will also require three different, uh, motions. Uh, the first will be to adopt an ordinance annexing the S, the, uh, the Southeast Regional Lift Station into the city.
So moved.
It's, uh, there's, has it been sec, can I hear it here second? It's been moved and seconded that we adopt the ordinance annexing the Southeast Regional Lift Station into the city of Durham. Madam Clerk, will you please open the vote? Close the vote.
Ordinance passes seven zero.
Thank you. We'll now need a motion to adopt a consistency statement.
Who to adopt?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt a consistency statement. Madam Clerk, will you please open the vote? Please close the vote.
Consistency statement passes seven zero.
Thank you, and now the motion to adopt the ordinance amending the UDO.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, will you please open the vote? Close the vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you very much. All right, uh, Ms. Smith, you did a bang-up job in your presentation. As you can see, it was extremely convincing. Uh, we'll now move to item nineteen, Christian Avenue Street closing.
Mr. Mayor, could I, uh, ask, uh, Mr. Young to confirm, I believe that this matter has, uh, been withdrawn by the applicant, but I'm not certain if, because it's an advertised public hearing, we need to open the public hearing and close it, or how to, how to handle that procedurally? So is that correct?
It is. Good evening, Pat, you're with the Planning Department. Late last week, the applicant withdrew this item, so we would ask that it be referred back to the administration. Would have to defer to the city attorney about whether need, or not the public hearing needs to be opened or not, but I believe it can just be referred back, uh, without opening the item since it's been withdrawn, but I, of course, would, would defer to the city attorney.
That, that's correct, and my understanding is, we've done that in the past, where the applicant, um, asked for the, the item to be referred back, that we can do that.
All right, thank you. So, um, can I just ask, Pat, is this, the item planning to come back to us, or you don't know that?
I think it's likely that it will. Um, this is part of a planned redevelopment, and there was some question between the owner and the adjacent owner about-
Okay.
-the location of the, of the-
All right.
-property division, so it's likely to come back to you, but it may be several months, and they, no one wanted to commit to a date certain, so which is why we're asking for-
I see. Thank you very much. All right, this item has been withdrawn and, uh, referred back to the administration. I don't believe we need a motion on that, do we, Mr. Attorney? Okay, so item nineteen has been withdrawn and was referred back to the administration, uh, and now, um, item twenty, consolidated annex item, annexation item AAA storage.
Good evening, Jamie Sonjak with the Planning Department. Requests for utility extension agreement, voluntary annexation, and zoning map change have been received from Tony Tate LLC for a seven-point-one-three acre tract. The subject site is located generally at seven-fifty and eight-oh-four Junction Road. This annexation petition seeks to bring one of the parcels, which is one-point-one, or one, I'm sorry, one-point-oh-one acres into the existing city limits. The subject site is presently zoned industrial light and RS, or residential suburban twenty. The applicant is requesting a zoning designation of industrial light with a development plan. The parcels are currently designated as industrial on the future land use map, which would be consistent with the zoning change. Approval of the annexation and zoning would become effective on September thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. Key commitments associated with this plan include limiting the use of self-storage facilities and limiting the height of the building to two stories. Um, the Public Works and Water Management Departments have determined that the existing water and sewer have the capacity for the proposed development. The Budget Department and Management Services Department, uh, determine that the proposed annexation will become revenue positive immediately following the annexation. Additional information can be found in the staff report. The Durham Planning Commission, at their July tenth meeting of two thousand and eighteen, recommended approval of the proposed industrial light with a development plan, um, by a vote of twelve to zero. Staff determines that these requests are consistent with the comprehensive plan, applicable policies, and ordinances. Three motions are required for this application. The first, um, is required by law to approve the utility extension agreement and the voluntary annexation petition. The second is to adopt a consistency statement, and the third is required for the zoning ordinance. I'll be happy to any, answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sonjak. Uh, councilmembers, you have heard the report from staff, I'm gonna declare this public hearing open, uh, and first I'm gonna ask, are there any comments or questions from councilmembers for staff? Councilmember Freeman?
I'm not sure, I'm trying to place this location, 'cause I think I have driven around there, and I just wanted to know if there were any flooding issues in this, in this section of the, of Junction Road?
If there were any-
Flooding issues on that road over there?
I, uh, am not familiar personally with any flooding issues. No, and I'm looking at my colleagues, and they are also saying no.
Was Junction Road-
Another twin-
-closed today, uh, for flooding?
I don't think we have anybody here, Mr. Mayor, that-
I don't, I didn't see it on the list.
Yeah.
So that, I think, since it's not on the list, I think that'd be a good indication.
I would not-
If it didn't flood today, it probably didn't flood.
I would not trust the list, the list is a little old, and it did not reflect some of the roads that have been identified within the last three days.
Okay, uh, yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Ms. Sonjak, could you confirm it, so they have submitted a site plan, or not?
At this time, I am not aware that they have.
So that's the process, really, though, that they would, you know, the next step for them would be to submit some kind of a development site plan, or site plan, at that point, they would evaluate all of the-
That's correct.
-conditions associated with floodplains and, uh, stormwater requirements.
That's correct, they would be held to all of the standards in the UDO.
And if it was in the floodplain or whatever, they, they would not be able to, uh-
Absolutely.
How do you, how do you address it if it's not in a flood, floodplain, but may, maybe due to other properties that there is runoff from those properties coming in?
Those are evaluated as a part of the, uh, site plan review process.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Cabrietta?
I'm just curious, and I think they may be here, but just looking at the BPAC comments and about the sidewalk, if that has changed, if there has been any change on that.
So there was a?
They're not interested in adding that piece of asphalt for a future bike lane.
Yeah. Why don't we wait on that and just, let's first ask if there are any comments for staff, and then we can ask the applicant. Any other comments or questions for staff? Okay. We have one person to sign up to speak on this item, Pam Porter. Ms. Porter, if you could come to this microphone to my right, and I'm going to initially give you three minutes, and there may be some questions for you as well.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Pam Porter, five zero one one, South Park Drive, with Tony Tate Landscape Architect. Our office prepared the development plan for the rezoning. I'm here to answer any questions you might have. And just to touch on Ms. Freeman's question, there are no, there's no floodplain on this site. And it's indicated on the development plan.
Not floodplain. I'm concerned about that Junction Road section, if there was flooding in that area.
Correct. But I just wanted to make a note that there is no floodplain on this site, just as an FYI, because flooding is a concern now that we just had the hurricane come through.
I want to be careful that we're mindful that the floodplain maps were prior to a lot of clearcutting and grading that has shifted a lot of water around. So I'm just going to be asking that question frequently.
No, understood, understood.
Thank you. Councilmember Cabrietta, you have a question for the applicant?
Yeah, I was just looking at the bike and pet advisory. And then, just was wondering if you all were standing firm about the bike lane.
The client is declining that at this moment, yeah.
Okay. Other questions or comments for the applicant? Ms. Porter, do you have anything else to add?
No, just thank you for your consideration of our project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant, or any other questions or comments for staff?
Mr. Mayor, just real quick, just, I'm trying to orient myself. I'm sorry, your name escaped me, I'm sorry.
Ms. Porter.
Ms. Porter. Is this the piece of Junction Road between ninety-eight and Cheek, or Cheek and Club? You know, Junction is kind of bifurcated by the train tracks.
I'm trying to think off the top of my head. I believe this is south of the train tracks.
There's an aerial attachment, I think Attachment Three, maybe? That would help, thank you.
I'm trying to get to that, too.
I was looking at the.
The vicinity map on my development plan doesn't go that far, so I could be mistaken.
Got it. I see it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you see, is, Councilmember Middleton, did you find out what you need?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Manager.
I know this is an area you're very familiar with.
I have some familiarity with it.
Okay. Councilmembers, any more questions or comments? This is a public hearing, and is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Is there anyone else here tonight who would like to speak on this item? If not, I'm going to declare this public hearing closed, and the matter is back before the council. We'll need three motions here to complete this item. One would be to adopt an ordinance annexing AAA storage into the city and to enter into this utility, authorize entering into the utility extension agreement.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, will you please open the vote? Close the vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you very much. Now, we need a motion to adopt the consistency statement.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt the consistency statement. Madam Clerk, could you open the vote, please? Close the vote.
Consistency statement passes seven zero.
Thank you. And finally, a motion to adopt the ordinance amending the UDO.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. And Madam Clerk, could you please open the vote? Please close the vote.
Ordinance passes seven zero.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And Ms. Sonjak, thank you for your work. We appreciate it, and you do a great job up here every two weeks, so we appreciate you. Thank you. And now, we'll move to Item Twenty-one, the K Street Two closing.
Good evening, Carla Rosenberg with the Planning Department. So Jeff Williams, on behalf of Colter Jewel Thames, requests to permanently close a three hundred thirty linear portion, linear foot portion of K Street. And this is the portion that is above or north of Highway one forty-seven. The K Street one was before you a couple of months ago and approved. This portion of K Street is an unimproved platted right-of-way maintained by the city. J-Boy LLC owns three parcels located immediately to the west of this right-of-way, and Ventus Pettigrew LP owns the parcel directly to the east. If closed, the right-of-way will be combined with these adjacent properties as shown on the associated street closing plat in Attachment Four of the staff report. The request meets applicable ordinance requirements, and all comments generated during the review process have been addressed. So the staff recommendation is to recommend, we recommend the permanent closure of this three hundred and thirty point oh eight linear foot portion of K Street.
Thank you, Ms. Rosenberg. Nice to see you here tonight as well. You have heard the report from staff, and I'm now going to declare this public hearing open. And first, ask if there are any comments or questions for staff by members of the council.
Just a verification, this area near the railway, would that have any bearing on the Light Rail project?
The Light Rail will go through. That right-of-way is planned for the Light Rail project.
Bill Judge Transportation, the proposed Light Rail alignment is along Pettigrew, just north of the closure. Aerial in this section.
It's aerial in this section?
Yes.
Is there any housing located in this section either, as well?
They're mainly commercial development along that section of Pettigrew Street.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for staff? I have no one signed up to speak on this item, but I will ask now, is there anyone here who would like to speak on Item Twenty-one, K Street Two closing? Is there anyone in the audience here tonight who would like to speak on this public hearing item? Any other questions or comments from staff, from councilmembers? If not, I'm going to declare this public hearing closed, the matter is back before the council, and I'll accept a motion to adopt an order to permanently closing this portion of K Street.
So moved. Second.
Madam Clerk, will you please open the vote? Please close the vote.
The order passes seven zero.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, colleagues, this is just the last item to come before us tonight. And subsequently, I'm going to declare this meeting adjourned at seven fifty-six. Thank you very much.
Excellent work tonight, Mr. Mayor.